Zoom meeting. And if you, when, when asked for a public comment, you have a comment, please go to your chat down at the bottom of your screen. Click on chat and down and well, I hope it works the same for you as it works for me. Then another screen will come up on the right side and you can type in the, the statement. I have a comment. At that point in time, Matt Shea, who is operating this for us, will let me know that we have a public comment. And he will, at the appropriate time, turn your mic on and say, go. Or some other set of words, Matt. Okay, thank you. Hi, Amanda. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, please. Oh, first, roll call, official roll call, Ms. Shumway.
Present.
Mr. Petrowski?
Here.
Ms. Dykett?
Yeah.
Ms. Bells?
Here.
Okay. And, and Virginia Guyer is here. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, please.
I move to enter into executive session regarding labor relations pursuant to 1 M R S A 405 6 D.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Ms. Shumway.
I.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Hi.
Okay, we're all going to go into a room right now. Matt's going to send us to a room. So when you see a question, well, the school committee is going to go into a room. When you see a question, do you want to go into the Zoom room? Say yes. Please, school committee people.
Okay.
And superintendent.
Yep, it should be the six of you and nobody else. And I'm assigning them right now. So again, you'll see that pop up and we'll just sit here, wait in the main room until you're done. And Connie, when you're ready to be done, just shoot me a quick text and I'll close the room. Okay. All righty, here we go.
Great.
Excellent.
Here she comes.
Do we have everybody?
One, two, three, four, five.
I was looking for Colleen.
I'm here.
She's just, she, she doesn't want to do video.
Kenna's here too.
Hi, Kenna.
Excellent.
Okay, we're back in public session, please. Communications, adjustments to the agenda. Madam Superintendent?
No.
No adjustments to the agenda. I entertain a motion for the approval of minutes March 4th, March 11th, and March 25th.
Still moved? Second.
Second.
No, who got there first? Sue?
Janet.
Oh, Janet got there first, yeah. Wait a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Shumway.
I. Yes.
I thought you were about to say a sentence.
No, I was saying, yes, yay.
Yay, yes.
Hi.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Um. Personnel retirements. So this is usually a sad time here. Motion to accept the retirement of Sherri Pike. Went to grade school, grade one teacher effective June 30th, 2022, 2020.
Still moved? Second.
Discussion. Sherri has been with us for over 25 years, or for 25 years, I think. Do I have that right? Where is Mr. Lad? Sound good, Mr. Lad? Sherri's been with us for 25 years and I would like the minutes to reflect that, that we appreciated her labors on the part of our children. Okay. Who's mixing food? All right. I guess that's it. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Here we go again. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion, I'll entertain a motion to accept the retirement of Janice Bridgio. Went through grade school, grade two teacher effective June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Discussion. I'd like the minutes to reflect, we are very appreciative of Ms. Bridgio's work with us for the last 21 years on the part of our children. Thank you. All in favor? Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And yes, motion passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to accept the retirement of Mark Carey. Went through high school English, alternative ed teacher effective June 30th, 2020.
Still moved? Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. All in favor? Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
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 Sorry, yes, motion passes unanimously. I love my hammer. I'll entertain a motion to accept the retirement of Kevin St. Lair. Went through grade school maintenance person effective June 30th, 2020.
Still moved? Second.
Discussion. Kevin has been with us for over, for 38 years, I think. And that's a lot. And so we appreciate all of his many, many efforts on the part of our school system, particularly the grade school. I was remiss in saying that I wish the minutes would reflect for Mr. Carey, appreciation for his last two years of work with our students. Did you get that okay, Colleen? Okay, all in favor of accepting the retirement of Mr. St. Laire? Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes, with regret.
Thank you. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And here we go, Matthew. Motion to accept the resignation of Matthew Shea, Director of Teaching and Learning, effective May 22nd, 2020.
Still moved? Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Matt, we appreciate all of your efforts very much on the part of our teachers and our students. And we wish you well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'll call the roll. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Passes unanimously. Superintendent report, please.
Thank you very much, Chairperson Guyer. The first item that I'd like to discuss is the 2021 projected health insurance increase. We received from N B A Benefits Trust our rates for 2021. And in 25 years of being a superintendent, I've never seen zero. So this is a first. We have a 0% increase for the next school year, which is awesome. I don't have the dental rates yet. The dental rates won't be in until the 1st of May. But what we are projecting at this time is that for the health insurance, we can bring down our anticipated cost by about $155,000. Amanda and I went through, and this is more her work than mine certainly, to make sure that we had our best guess at what people were going to take and what we anticipate for cost. She went through each of the articles where we have health insurance increases. And I sent to you what I call the budget side by side calculation. And Matt, I think you are able to put that up on the screen for me. Are you able to do that? So if you take a look at this, the calculated difference now is, for example, in Article 1, we had projected $192,555 increase and it's now 108. And as you go through the various articles, you can see from the budget passed on March 11th, what those reductions are. I think it's important to note, and this is a segue into item number two. When I present the school budget to the town council on the 13th, which is next Monday, I will be presenting the budget that was passed on March 11th. I can't unilaterally go in, even with the general consensus of the school board, and change those numbers. But I wanted you to have them and be able to explain what I think those differences are going to be. And then at this time, answer any questions about that. So I will pause. Any questions about the health insurance increases at this time?
What's the protocol for pulling out that $155,000?
Well, I don't know what it has been here, so I can only draw on what I've done in other districts. And what I would recommend is my understanding is that on Monday, it's the presentation. The council is not voting. And what I think would be helpful is if there are school members who are planning to attend, that you would let the council know of your willingness to reduce the school district budget by the 154,000, which, by the way, if you look at budget to budget overall, our budget increase now is a 1.5% increase. And if you go for the local appropriation, which is the bottom green at 131,360, we're now at just under 2%, it's 1.9 for the local appropriation increase.
Can I say something, Jenny? Yes, sorry, couldn't hear you. You're muted, Jenny.
Jenny's on mute.
Okay. Oh, no, you're muted again. You took it off and put it back on. Oh, I said, okay. Ms. Dykett?
I listened to the town council meeting and I, I don't know necessarily the feeling of the entire board, but I do know that Councilwoman Caprara is looking for a 0% increase. So I just wanted to put that out there. So I think if we do, you know, present it as, as we approved it, obviously, having that be a decrease would be huge in their eyes as well. So.
Jana?
Yes.
I, I also listened to just the second half of that and it was Councilwoman Caprara's wishes about the budget. So I've already had that chat with Dr. Brown, so she knows all about that. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Petrowski?
You know, for a number of years, we have discussed the need for some kind of a contingency fund. I think this is the time where it would be appropriate to allocate some of these monies to the contingency fund, because everything I'm hearing is about curtailment of school revenue allocations, that there are costs associated with the pandemic that will have to be accounted for, that revenue in some respects will be going down, even if it's only from people not buying new automobiles, which is happening across the country. So your vehicle registration income will be down. I'm just saying that, you know, we don't have a lot of flexibility in this, this budget as it is. And now we've got the opportunity to take and perhaps set aside some money into a contingency fund that could be used. I just, I, I just want us to discuss it, okay? Because I would vote in favor of it. I'm not sure of what amount I would want, but I can tell you right now, I think we've got to have some flexibility in terms of our ability to do things next year.
Dr. Brown, would you like to address that?
This is the first I've heard of the suggestion of a contingency fund, so I would need some time to think about that. I have, as part of the budget discussion, recommended that the board, on its legal lines, give Drummond a retainer out of this year's budget. And as far as other places I've been, there have been contingencies, but they haven't been particularly well funded and they've never been, in my experience, been large enough to cover a hit to general purpose aid. I think what Joe was talking about is, there's a lot of conversation statewide about a curtailment for 2021. The curtailment is applicable to general purpose aid. It's usually a percentage of it. It can be done by the governor without approval from the legislature on their own say so. Usually, at some point mid-year, the last time this happened, I think it was 2009-ish. Joe, you probably remember the last curtailment. And at that point, you've already set your teacher contracts, your ed tech contracts. There's not, there's not a lot of places to go. So you have that to think about. I also have seen the budget for the town. I understand where Ms. Caprara is coming from. And I think that if we have an opportunity as a school department to help with bringing down the overall percentage, we need to give that serious thought.
Thank you very much. Mr. Petrowski?
I'm not against trying to lower the, the tax portion attributed to the school budget. That's not the question. But for instance, I don't know for sure whether or not the governor is going to keep insisting that we try to get to here in this next couple of years to the $40,000 minimum pay for our teachers. Because if they curtail at any moment, it really just falls back on us. If you don't take care of the minimum requirement, but at the same time you curtail state funding, it falls back on the municipality to take and raise additional money to do that. So I, I'm just saying that I don't know what's going to happen, but I do know that we just are not in a position to take and say we can find even a few thousand dollars comfortably, you know, in this budget.
I'd like to say something about the contingency part. And Kristen, help me out here. But what we learned, what I think that we learned from the last auditor was that you, as long as we owe the town any money, we cannot start a contingency fund. Way back in 2011, 2012, we met with, we met with town council members who strongly suggested that we begin a couple of contingency funds. Actually, I think one was for vehicles and one was for maintenance. And it became clear that we couldn't do that because any money that we might put into a contingency fund, as long as we owed the town any money, had to go to the town. Is that, is that how you understand it, Ms. Shumway?
I thought so. And I thought that at one point, Dr. Brown was going to be looking into that with the auditors and making sure that that was what was happening, especially because of the activity fund. There are some questions as to what happens with that, since we still owe the town money. And so we would have to get that worked out for sure before we decide to create a contingency fund, because we still have the adult education deficit. So until that is cleaned up off the books, then we may find that any money we set aside each budget year, that it would be swept at the end of the year and be sent over to the town.
So Kristen is right about that. And I think that the question regarding the Student Activities Fund was in part answered, if we have a separate account for that. And I don't know if Amanda is still able to participate. Amanda, are those funds kept in a separate account? They are not at this point, but we were looking to do that for next year. And that just came up with our new auditor suggesting that we open a separate account for those funds. Right. So going forward, that is something that we'll be able to retain. But Joe, if we, let's say there wasn't a curtailment and we'd set aside 154,000, then we would, that would be swept. It would be swept against whatever balance that would be left as part of the school district end of year statement. But what I'm hearing Joe say is that you would obligate the 154,000? Or, or would you, you would just leave it on those lines, knowing that it's there?
No, I actually had thought more, the number that popped in my head was putting $50,000 of it into some kind of a contingency fund because of the environment that we're in.
So to help with that, generally, in my experience, a contingency, a curtailment mid-year is a percentage of your general purpose aid. And so you get in general purpose aid each year, $5 million, $30,000 and change. So if you are thinking of like a 1% of that, Joe, is roughly 50,000.
Right.
I would be stunned if a curtailment was only 1% of general purpose aid.
Me, me too. I, I have to admit it. My concern is, is that if they go this way, we may end up in a situation where we have to cut staff, you know, increase class sizes, et cetera, et cetera, just simply because we don't have the ability, if they cut part of the allocation, to take and recover from it in the sense that we have money somewhere that we can draw into, use to pay for. That's, that's what's, what's coming down.
And to make matters worse, as I understand it, we wouldn't even know anything about the curtailment until November-ish. So we're talking about positions somehow or another being cut in the middle of the school year.
So what I had said to Jenny before is that generally, the revenue forecasting is done and the report given in November. And so if it's under what they'd anticipated to fund the state's obligations, that's when they've got to pull back and do a curtailment. Joe?
Well, I, I just have one other question here. There has been discussion prior to this pandemic that there would be a likelihood that the state would take and increase the amount of money that they were giving to us. And I think they made steps to do that, but then I believe I understand is that they stopped it. And I don't think you included any of this supposed increase in the budget planning. But I was just kind of curious whether you would give any consideration to the first proposal they had regarding adding some additional state money.
I haven't seen anything come out with a new 279 that has additional state money in it. What I, and I can check on that, but what I have been told is that the 279s that were rolled in February are the, are the 279s. And they included the requested additional amount from the governor in her supplemental and the commissioner in the Department of Ed budget. So I, I don't think the legislature added to that.
Okay.
Any other questions with the superintendent, folks? Susan, I can't see you on my screen.
So I'm going to roll along, Jenny. And then if she does come up, then Matt, if you wouldn't mind taking that off the screen. Thank you. So I told you that the town council presentation is Monday. You're all welcome to attend. The next item is enrollment and we are at 8:57 right now. We're down a little bit from the March count of 8:64. And the finances. So we are getting very close to the end of the year. We are in, in my estimation, good position at this point. We are tracking pretty carefully some of the expenditures that we have for COVID. There will be COVID finances available to districts. So things, if we have to spend money, for example, on the lunches that we gave out or the staff time, hopefully we'll be able to recoup some of that through those national disaster funds. The enrollment, the enrollment, I'm sorry, the finances, one of the things that I do, I tease Amanda, because I call it my Sunday morning read, is right around the end of the month, I roll the accounts to see where we are. And because things basically froze, with the exception of salaries and benefits and contract costs, right around the middle of March, there are things that we haven't paid for and I don't anticipate that we will. So by example, we did not roll spring, spring contracts for coaches if those sports had not started. So there will be a savings there. There'll be a savings on the transportation lines. There will be some expenses that we did not anticipate. The oil line at the high school is over. I already authorized for the oil lines at the grade school and the middle school to be over and we filled up both of those tanks. We have put a hold right now on FMS services, because I don't want people in the buildings. At this point, we're trying to keep them closed and shuttered. So there will be a modest savings for the FMS lines. So I'm starting to go through and calculate where I think in the areas of the budget that we can either pre-buy things for next year. I already talked about the legal retainer that I think you should use from your legal lines, which is in Article 6, and seeing what we can do to make capacity in next year's budget. And Joe, that may answer some of your questions regarding contingency. I think it's prudent to do that. We did that last year. We pre-bought school board legal liability insurance. We prepaid dues to the extent that we can. And I'd be happy to take any questions about that.
What percentage remaining should we have here on our articles?
Oh, I knew you were going to ask that. We're at what, 10/12, Amanda? So what's that, 5/6? We're right at 70, 75% 9/12.
So we should have 25% remaining? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. So this is really looking very good. Any questions on that, folks? Okay. I wonder what that noise is. Dr. Brown? You want to continue?
Windows open.
Am I, did I mute myself?
No, Dr. Brown just left the meeting by accident.
Oh.
Matt has control, maybe he shut her out.
What did you do with the superintendent, Matt?
It looked like her screen froze. I think she probably got out and she's trying to get back in to see if she can. It looked like her screen froze. I think she probably got out and she's trying to get back in to see if she can get it to unfreeze.
That'd be my guess, too. Common occurrence in Zoom.
Is it? Then she knows how to do it, okay?
I didn't go that far, but I hope so.
Question, Madam Superintendent. So are we going to get directions how we can get on the town council meeting on Monday night?
For the town council, and you can help me with this, Jenna, for the town council, they sent an invitation out via the Town's Alert now that said, in 30 minutes, the meeting's going to start, and here's the address. So instead of putting it on our, like our agenda, which you've had for since last Friday, they put it out 30 minutes prior to the meeting. And the reason why they were doing that is they were trying to get away from some of this Zoom meeting bombing that's been going on.
Okay.
So.
See, I went to their website and I found meeting, but then the link didn't work anymore.
Right.
So I emailed, and then Sarah sent me an email invite. I did not get it through the Town Alert.
Oh, see, I got it through the Town Alert. I didn't notice it, though, until 10 minutes past the beginning of the meeting. But they did that because of the meeting bombing, so they had to redo their approach.
Joe, if you can get on, text me, because I plan on...
Okay, I will, because I haven't been receiving the Town Alerts either, so I didn't know we even had a Town.
So Jeff said that that was an issue, and they just said to go in and sign up again. You won't receive double alerts, but they did say that there was an issue with that, and they're just asking people to go sign up for alerts again if you're not receiving them.
Or you can just go to the website, I think.
All right, great. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, Dr. Brown, we lost you.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. For whatever reason, when the battery on this computer drops below 50%, it shuts off. And I thought it would be okay, and I apologize that it just dies. It's very frustrating.
They're fine. We're just talking about the town council meeting coming up.
All right. So I talked to you. Any questions about the finance report?
Nope.
So you're in good shape. And the audit recommendations I sent out to the school committee, the management responses to each of these audit, each of the audit recommendations, so you should have that. The CHA presentation has been moved to May 6th. It will be online. We are going to have a second community forum, but I haven't scheduled that yet. So stay tuned for that, but the presentation will be Zoom, like we're all doing. And they will give us the results of the study that they've done. I'm very much looking forward to that. I think that'll be a good piece of work. In your packets is something called the Main Spirit of America nomination. And I think it's a nice opportunity for the school committee to nominate someone who they think is deserving of their, to recognize their volunteer spirit. And we need to take care of that between now and, where's Colleen? Is it the end of the year? It's like June. We need to have that done?
June 30th.
So probably in May. So between now and then, if you can think of someone in our community that would be deserving of that reward, that would be great. Let's see. The next item is let's see here. It's the reports on remote learning. And if that's all right with everybody, I'd like to hold on that and let the administrators speak to that during their open forum. Would that be okay with everyone? I think that that's a better use of time. And then the last thing is, I copied you with a letter that I sent to parents April 3rd that let them know that we were going to be closed through May 1st. I think it's important to note at this time that the commissioner, much to the surprise of a lot of superintendents, including this one, went public yesterday with the recommendation to close school for the remainder of the 2019-20 school year. And that caught a lot of us by surprise, as I said. I have a meeting with Kennebec superintendents tomorrow and a meeting with our administrators as well. We're going to talk about that. As of today, I would not recommend that the school committee alter the calendar or take that step. And I think it's a particularly uninformed way to do that. And going forward, I think you need to have a better sense, if in fact we go in that direction, of what that means specifically for our students, not just academically, but there are a lot of things that happen in buildings, whether it's graduations or end of year celebrations or promotions, that I simply am just not in a position to answer today. But I would like to talk a little bit about April vacation. We talked about, when I say we, the administrators and I, we meet regularly by Zoom, talked about planning for the remainder of the year. And we understand that for a lot of families, including mine, I've got a 14-year-old girl at home, that this has been a particularly challenging upheaval to try to make some sense out of both in our personal families as well as our work life. And it was our consensus that our educators need a break. And for the week of vacation, we would like to keep it as currently planned, which means that teachers would be able to take the time off, that we would still partner with Michoana to serve meals, but that in terms of delivering instruction, it would be comparable to having April vacation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. That's the end of my report.
Ms. Shumway?
Dr. Brown, I know that we had discussed April vacation in an executive committee meeting, so I appreciate you addressing that. Can you just further address, and maybe Mr. Campbell will need to assist in this, and explaining if with the missing two weeks of essentially school, when school closed and remote learning didn't begin, there's a concern about our AP students. So can you just elaborate a little bit more about if we can, if we continue with April, an additional week off, an additional April vacation? And those AP exams are still going to be happening remotely in mid-May? That, what that means for those AP students and how we're going to mitigate the effects of that?
Sure. I'll take a crack at that, Mark, and then ask you if you might let the school committee know. The AP teachers were among the first, if not the first, to get their online and remote learning platforms up and going. As we rolled out the remote learning and/or non-in-person learning for our students, the AP teachers were the folks who helped train the other teachers. They were the ones who helped provide kids with the resources immediately. And in my thinking back to those first couple of weeks, they were the ones that said, we want to get going with this. The other piece I know about the AP test is from what I've seen from the college board and others, it's pretty slimmed down this year. They understand that the kids, that kids have not been in school, and it's just not fair to try to assess them the way that they would in a regular year. Mark, that's my position on it. Would you like to add?
Well, the only thing I would add to that is, if you're an AP teacher, you're generally planning on being done somewhere around April vacation so that you can spend the last two to three weeks doing a lot of practice tests to get the students finally ready for the exam. So I'm hoping that between the fact that they jumped on board probably a little bit earlier than the rest of us, and the fact that they'd already planned on finishing up around April vacation, that they still will have enough time to address any of the content that the college board has identified that will be on the exam. As Dr. Brown said, they did cut it down quite a bit. It's just they've done away with the multiple choice section. It's just the open-ended, and it's pretty narrow as to what's going to be covered on that.
Thank you for your explanation.
That concludes my report. Anybody else have questions regarding the superintendent's report?
Did you want to say anything more, Kristin?
No, that's, that's all. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Does the superintendent want a motion regarding the continuation of observing April vacation?
I don't, Joe, because that's already in the calendar. So if you were going to change the calendar, then I would have proposed using those as in-school days, but I'm not...
I'm perfectly fine with what you spoke about. That's good.
Thanks. I'm just, you know, if I might, and I realize this isn't on my report, but I hope the school committee understands how hard teachers and our other educators are working right now. This is an entirely new experience for them, and they are exhausted. I heard from one teacher who is trying to manage her own children, her grandchildren, teach school, and she said, you know, Connie, I'm having a really hard time. You know, this is all new for me. Being in front of a camera for hours at a time is a lot of work. And I really respect how hard people are working. They're doing their level best to try to meet the needs of our kids. And I really want to applaud them because they have stepped up. Anyway, so thank you for letting me add that period at the end of my sentence, my exclamation mark. And that concludes my report. So Ginny, on to you.
Thank you very much. So I went, I reached, well, to a Zoom meeting, MSMA meeting for school committee chairs. And that was mostly about Zoom meetings, how they legally should happen. And because of that meeting, you saw a little different introduction on our agenda. And we're going to try to have public comment verbal this time because that's what Drummond has suggested to everybody. So that's pretty much what came out of that meeting. As far as the school committee retreat goes, it is still July 6th, 9 to 1. There's a question about where we were going. I'd suggest, because of the financial state that we're going to be in, that we go to someplace a little less frugal than some of what the thoughts that I saw. And I'd like your okay to ask Michoana if they would be willing to have us in their dining room for our retreat. What say you?
I'm fine with that. That's a good idea.
Joe? Mr. Petrowski?
Well, I'm fine with it, too, but wouldn't they be busy?
Well, they're very likely not to be.
Okay. That's all right.
That's a question. But even if they are busy, something along that line, rather than some of the other things, I think would be prudent at this point in time. Ms. Dykett?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Ms. Bells?
That's fine with me.
Thank you very much. We'll proceed to see what we can nail down. I also attended a Zoom meeting that was an MEA DOE meeting. It went very well, and that, a lot of that was with the fact that all employees are online and they're, if they're not working right now, that they're on deck, that all of our employees, all school employees are indeed essential. So there were a lot of questions that came out of that. And that concludes my report. We'll go on to standing committee reports. Finance committee, Ms. Dykett?
Yes. I'll be, okay. We did AP warrants, 16, 17, and 18. Colleen, I did email these to you. S and P 12, payroll 17A, 18, 18A, 18B, and 18C. And Amanda, do you know if there are more warrants in there to sign?
Just did a warrant on, just did a warrant on Friday, so there would be that one in there, both S and P in general.
Okay. So Sue and I will pick a time and we'll probably maybe contact the town manager to get in. Would that be the best person to contact to get in there to do one?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Thank you. Policy committee meeting, committee, we haven't had any meetings. Maybe we can get started with that in another week or two. What do you think, Dr. Brown?
Well, the next policy committee meeting would have been May, and in May, you have the CHA presentation that will be part of your agenda. Depending on how long that is, I may suggest that it precedes the board meeting as opposed to being part of the board meeting. That's how we're going to set it up before.
Okay.
So it will probably be June when the next policy committee meeting happens.
Thank you. And negotiations?
We are still negotiating with the administrative unit. An agreement has not been reached, and yesterday, the association filed paperwork for fact-finding with the Department of Labor. So that is the point that we're at right now.
Thank you. Administrator open forum. I put your names all there, so so you know who you were following. I thought that might be easier with this Zoom stuff. So Mr. Lag?
I have to figure out how to unmute myself. This is, this has definitely been an interesting time period as we figure out how to conduct school. I want to start by saying thank you to Jolene for all her hard work. She has been right on the front lines with the teachers while I've been trying to do other things that are more sort of big picture stuff. I did join all of the PLC meetings online, starting this week with her. So she's completed, this is the third round of PLCs with each grade level team and CE team. We have, I think, just one more grade level to do tomorrow, and then we will have completed all of those. But that work has gone very well, and it has been great to see all of the teachers and their focused discussions about their learning menus and the work that they've been working on together to get all of this information out to the families. I'm not going to say anything more about it because I don't want to steal Jolene's thunder, because she's the primary presenter tonight to give you a little information about what's been going on at the grade school in terms of the direct learning. So Jolene, you're going to have to unmute.
You have to unmute?
There she is.
Oh, there you, you muted. Try unmute.
Try again.
Yeah, okay.
Did I get it this time?
Yeah, don't push anything more. Okay.
Take my hands away from the laptop.
Try, right.
Well, I just, I'll follow up where Jeff left off. We have had PLCs. Normally, when we're in school, we have PLCs once a month. And so we've had one every single week for, like Jeff said, this is the third week. And I have told the staff at the Winthrop Grade School just how remarkable they are. And the hard work that is going on is, they're just, they're tremendous, and they've done some tremendous work. So I just wanted to start by letting you know, I follow in what Connie said, people are working extra hard right now. So I just, I'll kind of summarize what we've been doing. We've been using a lot of different platforms. I encourage teachers to continue to use platforms that they may have already had in place with their classrooms. And along with the fact that we were able to add other platforms, so it's been email, ClassTag, CSAR, Remind, Google Classroom, Google Meets, Google Docs, YouTube, and Zoom. And so it's a variety of platforms, but they're making sure they're using ones that are meeting their families' needs and ones that families are accustomed to them using. We decided to collectively, as a whole school, as Jeff said, create at-home learning menus. So we did that pre-K through 5, and we did it for a multitude of reasons. One, the inconsistency... One, the inconsistency, creating some structure and sustainability. And one of the big pieces that we thought about was the fact that we had parents who had multiple children across grade levels. And so we decided we would be consistent across grade, grade levels so that when parents received it, it was something familiar for each grade. So they weren't receiving something totally different from two or three different grade levels. We've had great feedback from parents. It's all been, actually all been very positive. Parents have appreciated the learning menus, have appreciated the fact that it gives them some routines. And they've, some have even asked for more than what's been offered in the learning menus, which teaches, depending on, you know, the, the requests, teachers are taking and giving those extra resources to those that are asking. So I think it, I think that part has just been great because it went out and it was stated that you could do one activity, you could do several activities, you could do all activities, and then if you wanted more, to reach out to your teacher. So I feel like we were really being considerate of all of our families and, and trying to meet all their needs. The mystery guest reader, Teresa had mentioned it when we were in our separate meetings. But the mystery guest reader was something that Teresa and Michelle Biddlecombe came up with this idea and together they've, you know, put it together. And Michelle's kind of, I think Jeff refers to her as project manager. But we have over forty reads in there right now. And it's, if you haven't visited it, please visit it. There's like over forty books and there are several poetry readings in there now too, which are accessible to all of our Winthrop grade school families. So, and actually it would be available to any of the Winthrop grade school because it's on our, it's on our homepage. So it's, if you haven't checked it out, please do. And then Jeff, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about the homepage and how we've made that more accessible to families. But we've, we've done, I think our, our grade school has done some fabulous things and I know, you know, the other schools have too. But it's, it's gone well and working well. Jeff, did you want to mention the homepage information?
I, I can. This is, this has certainly been a challenge with our lack of technology skills on many of our parts. But I was able to contact Sierra. I think I started working with them yesterday about moving some of the clutter off our homepage and getting the teacher links directly onto the homepage. And I think with their help, we have successfully accomplished that at this point. So we've improved our connectivity with parents. They can simply go to our homepage and click on and access the learning menus as well as teacher websites. Whereas before, they were kind of buried in underneath and required multiple links.
So and I, and I once again just want you to know that I, I am, I am thrilled to be at Winthrop grade school with the staff that's there and, and just great people, so.
Thank you very much. Please, please let your teachers know that the school committee is just so very supportive of all of their efforts on behalf of our students. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Kress?
I'm next. We have also had grade level meetings, unified arts, team meetings, and total staff meetings. And I learned how to set up my own Zoom staff meeting. So I don't have to ask Matt to do it anymore, or the role to do it anymore. I can do it myself and we will be having our next one on Friday. All of my teachers have updated their web pages, that is, and and assignments. Most of the teachers are using Google Classroom. Some teachers are using the Zoom. Some who have used it are now not using it because of middle school behavior. And it's just not as effective with kids who are ten to fourteen years old as it could be. And so we've reverted back to our Google Classroom. I have worked on the webpage and I am also working on trying to get the schedule of when my teachers have office hours, when they are actually conducting classes, and how to get the kids to go to one place. And look, all of the kids have received numerous emails from all of their teachers. That's how they're doing it, emailing back and forth. We went by content area and all you really need to do is go to the Winthrop page and go to the link on the teacher's links, their teacher classroom webpages, and you will see all of the things that they are, are, are doing. A lot of them have tutorials that go with it, with them actually videotaping themselves, showing, for instance, how to sew a button. How to sew on a button is a unit in our adulting class, how to make good choices in wellness. And I have two Facebook pages that have started, one for the art class. Lisa Gilman has a Facebook page where kids are giving her artwork and she is showcasing it. And we also have a YouTube station with Amanda Knowlton, where she has a challenge of the week and the kids need to do the challenge and send her videos and she posts them. And they're hysterical, by the way. And it's a lot of fun and it's hard work and it gets the kids outdoors. So that's one of the things that we're trying to do too, is get the kids to go outdoors. We've also learned that on Google, you can do Google Meets rather than a Zoom classroom. And then you're tied into that Google, which gets rid of a lot of the issues that Zoom has. So I'm not sure if you want more than that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I was just, some of my other teacher friends from across the state have been concerned with the number of students that are not responsive at all. They're not responding to emails. They're not coming on board with Zoom classrooms or Google classrooms. Do you have any idea about the participation numbers?
I, I do Ginny, because each one of my teams developed a Google spreadsheet where they listed all the students' names and they are connecting. And when they connect, they put a checkmark beside the kids' names. And at our last staff meeting, we actually listed kids' names that nobody had heard from. And we made personal phone calls to their parents to check in. So yeah, yeah, when I hear them from the kids, we're contacting the parents.
But is that a lot? Is that a almost unmanageable number or you're having pretty good participation?
Matt, when we talked at the meeting, I'm gonna look to Matt, I believe we had maybe four kids.
I would have said, yeah, I would have said maybe two or three at the most that people are just like,
Really?
I'm not sure. Yeah, it is like barely anyone. Yeah, it's really nice to see.
Yeah, I really think the kids want it. These kids, the, the thing that I've heard the most from my teachers is they are overwhelmed with emails from kids. And sometimes it's just, hi, I miss you. But because you have an email, you feel like you need to answer it. So at my last staff meeting, my, my comments to them were shut the computer and walk away. You are not hired to work twenty-four seven. This, this is a job and you have a life, just like when you get up and walk away from work, you need to walk away from the computer and everything else that goes with it because, and so most of them now, my advice was to go, because one of the teachers said they did this, to put a disclaimer on their webpages that say, you know, my office hours are here. If you send me an email outside of that, you may not hear from me until tomorrow, but I will get back to you. Because the, you know, you figure most of my teachers have at least eighty kids on their caseload. That's eighty kids who want to talk to them every single day, more than once. That's unmanageable. But no Ginny, I, I think that we've done a remarkable job connecting with all kids.
That's the antithesis of my friends who are still teaching concerns.
I'm not saying they don't work. I'm saying we've connected with them.
They're, they're having trouble connecting, so. Ms. Randall?
I just wanted to add that as far as the grade school, we have two students right now that we haven't connected with out of about four hundred and fifty kids. And we're still working on it because we have some other ideas that we're trying. But it's been the same at the grade school and teachers have done the email, they've done the phone calls. They've done like several things to try and reach kids. So we have two students that we're still trying to reach, but, and it's the same thing at the grade school. We've had to suggest in PLCs, like just, you know, give hours that you'll be available. Because they were coming through with the same thing, you know, people were emailing, people were sending in things. And I said, you can't do that. Like, we're just, we need to stay healthy, so. But it's been the same thing at the, at the grade school too, so.
That is remarkable. That is remarkable. I, I just wanted to add to that a little bit, what the commissioner said at the MEA DOE Zoom meeting that they had, that helps me. You know, some people could say that this is our teacher's job and usually they're there from seven thirty to three or whatever their, their times are. And so why aren't they available like that now? And, and, and the way that the commissioner answered that question is, what we need to understand is all of our people are affected by the pandemic. This, I don't want to state the obvious, but this is a pandemic situation. And a lot of our teachers have their own children at home to try to keep track of. A lot of our teachers have their own parents that they're trying to help out and that are concerned with. And as Dr. Brown mentioned, some of our parents have their grandchildren because the, the parents of those grandchildren have been considered important people that have to continue to work. So we have, we have to take all of that into consideration when, when we're talking about what our teachers are doing and our expectations of all of our employees, so. Thank you very much. Mr. Campbell? Mr. Campbell, you're on.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know.
So at the high school, the feedback we are receiving from teachers, students, and parents alike has been very positive at the high school on the work that the teachers have been sending out or doing on. I just happened to, in the last two days, attend two different classes. The first one was a sophomore civics class. And today I attended a, it was quite apparent the teacher had done quite a bit of work behind the scenes to get the materials out to the kids so that when it came time to actually have classroom discussions, they were prepared, she was prepared. In the social studies one that I watched, teacher progress on technology has come a long ways because as she started out as a large group, but then she broke it down into a small group discussion. And then she moved us all around into different groups and held other small groups discussions. So it's amazing what they are doing with the technology. We've had two colleagues jump right in and, and offered the assistance, since each one support, since could continue their learning. Teachers have been doing live sessions, but each of those sessions, they've been recording so that students who happen to be essential workers and are working can catch those sessions at their convenience. I know with MEA, it has given us to the option to allow our students to do pass fail for this year. Or they can take their normal ABC grades. So that's something that's been fed it out by now by Ms. White. I have not heard from KBCC what they're going to do with the dual enrollment. Have you Amanda?
Yeah, we're expected to just continue.
Okay, so the students who are taking online classes through KBCC, I get their midterm grades and all are passing with flying colors. So, you know, they picked right back up when, when KBCC started back on.
We're just waiting to hear what the CDC is saying, and that's what they're following. So no updates at this point. If you do have a chance, you can see that there's some sports teams, all state teams from the winter that are now out. Trying to share that via Facebook and Twitter.
Thank you.
Yes, wish, I really wish I had more to, to share with you folks, but as you know, my world is very much on hold right now.
Yes, very much. Mr. Campbell, what are you trying to say?
Two more things.
Yeah.
So next.
Thank you, Mr. Stoneton. Go ahead, Mr. Campbell.
Next week, we are going to do our town meeting. It's going to be April sixteenth at eleven AM. We're hoping to do that live and push it through Facebook as well as Zoom. At that time, I'm going to talk about how we are going to have students actually access the course description booklet for twenty twenty-one and begin the course signups online. You know, we were ready to go and this all happened, so we, we gotta get that done before the end of April vacation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Lemio?
Well, special ed is off and running. I've had Zoom meetings with my teachers every week. And I usually have pretty much daily contact with them also. What I asked them to do was match what their grade level students are doing with the grade level in the grade school, the middle school, and the high school. So if they're doing learning menus at the grade school level, that's what I would expect, the same thing with the kiddos in K to two or K to five at the grade school. So I know that some of my grade school teachers are working in the PLCs with Jolene also, so they're aligned with them. Totally amazed by some of the work that I'm seeing. And we started doing IEP meetings last week by Zoom and so far, so good. The IEP meetings that we can do because there are some we can't do because either some of the specialists aren't available or the testing wasn't completed before this time. And so we really can't meet. But in those cases, we get ahold of the parent, we discuss it with them, and then we postpone till we can get the testing done. So a lot of contact with parents. Just about all of my teachers and therapists have made contact with parents. Last week, I had to send out about fifteen letters to parents and I put all the teachers and therapists' contact information in that letter. And some parents did respond to that. We have about ninety percent, I would say, participation in learning or therapies. And I would say the ten percent, probably only three or four are doing nothing. The other six percent of that ten percent. The other six percent of that ten percent are doing what their grade level team is doing and they feel that's enough for right now. Let's see. It's, it's going pretty well. My therapist, totally amazing, I have one speech therapist that is doing all the therapy she would normally do by Zoom. I mean, if a child needs two times thirty of speech a week, she's doing two times thirty. She's also continuing to bill CDS for the CBS kits, so hopefully we'll continue to receive that revenue line too. But there's a lot of good things going on and, you know, they're learning like everybody else. I, I am sensitive to half of my teachers have children at home. And I think it is a challenge for them to juggle doing all of this and contacting people and, you know, providing learning opportunities and also taking care of their children at home. But we're doing, we're doing the best we can. Still learning a lot from the state and the federal government about, you know, the timelines and the regulations, but there's quite a bit of support there, so I participate in a lot of those meetings too.
Thank you very much, any questions for Ms. Lemio? Mr. Shea.
So I have a couple of things, first of all about the federal grants that Lori just alluded to. I was in a meeting this morning about the federal grants and they're adjusting some of the timelines to, so we can do the application slightly earlier this year. And the performance reports will be pushed back a couple of months, so we don't have to submit those until November first instead of September first. There's some talk about the CARES Act that Dr. Brown talked a little bit about some of the extra federal money that is coming our way. That is unknown how much at this point, that is still in progress for what, what his main is going to get. But as soon as.
April twentieth through April twenty-fourth. And, but first I want to ask if there's any public comment about that particular motion. If there is, go to your chat and type in, I have a comment. And then your, Matt will open your mic. We'll unmute you. Matt, you're back.
I've been having power surges down here, so I don't know why, because the sky looks fine, but I apologize for that. And I'm glad that I didn't shut down the meeting.
Did you have anything, you, you were sort of in mid.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, one thing was about grants, it's just been pushed back a little bit. We'll get money from the CARES Act fairly soon, we'll let you know when, whenever that happens. And the, just the last thing I want to say was that Mr. Campbell was talking about how well the teachers have started to learn their technology and done some amazing things with it, and I just want to chime in, this is a common occurrence with curriculum leaders around the state and around the country right now, that the teachers are really stepping up, learning lots of things, and the hope is that we can really rethink how we're doing and delivering some of that content to our kids when we do come back to a more in-person relationship, that how do we reach some of those kids that we might not have reached before? And I think it's a good way to reflect a little bit.
I agree with you, I've also mentioned to Dr. Brown that, that I, I'm concerned that we'll have to roll this out again come, say, next October when flu season comes around, unless by, by some miracle, the entire world has been inoculated, inoculated with a vaccine, which I just don't see happening by that time.
Yep, I would, I would agree with you, I would agree with you, this is kind of good practice for maybe the new normal, as they'd say.
Yes, yeah. Have you received any notifications of any comments, Matt?
I have not, there's nothing in the chat and there wasn't before I left either.
Okay, will someone make that motion for me, please?
I move to payment to Camp Metowana for meals served to Winthrop students, April twentieth through April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Any, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in, well, seeing, I'll call the roll, Ms. Shumway.
I had a comment that I'd like to make before that. I just want to say a huge thank you to Metowana and to the director, Norm and his staff for, for filling this need for our community as well for Monmouth. It's just very gracious of him to, to offer this to our school district. And thank you to the efforts of Chef Aaron and Dr. Brown for working with him and, and getting this moving. It's just been phenomenal resource for our community to have.
And you already voted yay.
I did vote yay.
Yes, Mr. Petrowski.
Yay.
Ms. Dykett.
Yes.
Ms. Bells.
Yes.
I vote yay as well, motion passes unanimously. We're about ready to entertain a motion to suspend all requirements for community service for the school year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, for the class of twenty twenty, the class of twenty twenty-one, the class of twenty twenty-two and the class of twenty twenty-three, setting their graduation requirement to be forty-five hours. Is there any public comment? If there are any folks out there in the public that would like to make a comment, please type it in chat that you have a comment and Matt will unmute your mic. I feel like we ought to have a musical interlude here. Anything coming in, Matt?
There is nothing in the chat box.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain that motion, please.
I move to suspend all requirements for community service for the school year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty for the class of twenty twenty, class of twenty twenty-one, class of twenty twenty-two and class of twenty twenty-three, setting their graduation requirement to be forty-five hours.
Second.
Discussion? Oh, call the roll, Ms. Shumway.
Can you not see me when I'm raising my hand for discussion?
Oh, I'm busy looking at my agenda, it's just not you, I apologize, I have to get better at it. Ms. Shumway.
I didn't know if something was happening with my.
No, it's just with me, just with me.
I just have a quick question, so all of the require, all of the volunteer hours that our students have recorded up to this point, is that recorded on their transcript somehow? I just am wondering if, one, it's recorded on the transcript anyways. And two, if the, if it is recorded, because we're waiving the requirement, will the hours that students have accumulated thus far, will they not get credit for them?
I think that's a question best posed to Mark.
We lost it, oh, there he is.
Kristen.
Mr. Campbell.
So, my understanding is students get half a credit. So regardless for their seniors, regardless of whether they have just their forty-five, which are in through their junior year, or they have up to the sixty, we're going to give them the half credit based upon this vote tonight.
Okay, so that, so on the.
Does that make sense?
Yes, I just wasn't sure how the transcript worked and if it listed the number of hours that our students did for community service. And if it, that's not the case, then, then my question, then it doesn't matter, so thank you.
We good?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Shumway.
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski.
Yes.
Ms. Dykett.
Yes.
Ms. Bells.
Yes.
I vote yes also, motion passes unanimously. This is the part on our agenda where the public may make a comment about anything having to do with our school. So if you have a comment, would you please go to your chat? Click on the chat down the lower right-hand side, it'll give you a place to type, type in, I have a comment. And then our facilitator will open your mic. I'd like this to work once, I'd like to just see this work once.
We had some members of public show up, but when you were all in executive session for, they were there for approximately forty seconds each. And one thing we, my comment right now, I guess, would be the only thing that we've been Zoom bombed so far tonight by is Kenneth's cat keeps walking behind her.
Yes, I saw Kenneth.
Oh, there it is. We do have a question from Joel Stoneton.
Mister, thank you for, thank you for typing that in, Mr. Stoneton.
Well, I thought you might like to have it work, as you said, so.
Yeah.
One thing Mark and I have been talking about a little bit is the marquee sign down at the end of the road. It may not seem like a big deal, but we would like to put something up that says simply, thank you to our first responders. Thank you to those types of folks. So I wanted to ask you as well as Dr. Brown if that was number one okay? And if you would like to maybe we could put up there, meaning we don't need to do anything specific to a person, but just a group. Just because there's a lot of people that are allowing things to still happen for us.
I love that idea, and if we could also do first responders and essential, because I know that we are sure very fortunate to have truck drivers that are willing to keep on delivering.
Absolutely.
The stuff that we need.
We have capacity to do about twenty-four slides, but I just thought it might be a really cool idea to not only do emergency folks, but again, essential workers. So with your blessing, I will move forward with that.
Anybody, anybody upset by that?
Nope.
It looks like everybody's pretty supportive of that.
And if it's okay, I will just send an email out to you folks in A Team and just ask for some feedback. Because I certainly don't want to miss anything, I don't want to overdo it either. But I did, before things shut down at the school, I did bring that computer home, so I have access to upload new slides.
Cool.
And please keep that in mind as we move forward if you need need any information out there.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, yep.
Thanks for sharing, now, now we know how it works.
Yes, yes, as Mr. Campbell just said, would probably be a good idea to include Metowana on that.
For sure. Thank you. No, any other questions, Matt, or comments?
Nope.
Seeing none, school committee open forum, Ms. Bells.
I wanted to comment on my daughter loving the things that Ms. Stoneton is doing with her challenges and her videos, like Ms. Chris was saying, she was sharing some of them with me and she is enjoying them tremendously.
Super, Ms. Dykett.
Just thank you to everyone for stepping up and helping out. And thank you to Dr. Brown for keeping us informed as well. And thank you to the administrative team and all the teachers, support staff, everyone, this is obviously treading new water. And I appreciate Dr. Brown giving some, you know, time to think about how we're going to proceed, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, skip over me and go to Mr. Petrowski.
Well, thank you, it was interesting that while this meeting was going on tonight, the Gorham School Department put out a notice. However, the notice said that school was going to be closed and remote learning would take place through the year twenty-one. That caused quite a bit of controversy, that I received a lot of notices, it's since been corrected, but just shows the importance of reading what you're sending out once in a while. I know I've been at fault for not doing that correctly too. The other thing is that I really do appreciate the sports reporters and the cooperation they've been getting from coaches and alumni, et cetera, so that we can keep in touch with those of us that look at the sports page before the obituary page every day. And Kenner, I noticed you were on the sports page a couple of days ago for recognition, recognition by the Sun Journal for your basketball achievement. And we've had football players recognized and we also had Rob Munzing and his group from Gartner, which rebroadcasted the Winthrop-Mattawamake State High School Football Championship a few days ago, which was great, especially for me, because I didn't know who had won, I couldn't remember. I thought we were going to win too, and that was a real sad story. And then finally, I would give you another notice that I received tonight is that Hanafit is now going to start tomorrow, limiting us to only one of each. So whether it's toilet paper or paper towels or wipes, but they're trying to do something to cut down on the fact that people showing up after fifteen minutes after the score is, store is open, don't have anything left. It's been, and basically stripped ban out there. So I hope all of you have a good time and I certainly admire the resolve of the parents and grandparents and taking care of their kids and then getting them on for the remote learning classes too. That's great.
Thank you very much. Ms. Shumway.
Yeah, I just want to echo what you all had said and extend my appreciation to all the teachers and administrators for all of the efforts and problem solving that's gone into what it takes to transition an entire school in two weeks over to completely remote. I was, when I was reading through the remote learning plans, it struck me when Mr. Campbell's directive and discussion with his teachers said, assess your curriculum and take a look at, you know, a couple of things that you can accomplish. And I thought that that was so important to, to note that it, it's a lot to put on teachers to try to accomplish all of your curriculum that you plan to in the classroom and the lessons that you planned and suddenly switch that over and teach it at home. So I really appreciate all of, all of the acknowledgement of the administrators to their teachers and, and the understanding that how difficult this task has been. And then taking each problem as it comes up and, and finding a solution for everyone for education, but then also for checking in and supporting our students and their families mentally as well. Because, and for the administrators, as I heard come out tonight, you all supporting your teachers and your staff and making sure that you're keeping their mental health in mind. So you all need to have a support system too. So I hope you're heeding your own advice to your teachers and your staff and taking some time for yourselves as well through all of this. And I'm just really thrilled with, with what's the good learning that's, that's still continuing and what everyone is doing, I'm really proud to be part of this school district and that there's such a great team of people willing to, to problem solve through this really unique time. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, Josh, it's so nice to see you, how are you?
You too. I'm good, I'm good, I'm actually, I'm actually, I'm enjoying the remote learning distance, I think it's great. And from the feedback that I've heard from some of my, from some of the people in my grade and the lower grades, they really like it, they like making their own schedule, is what I've been hearing a lot. They like waking up a little later than usual, which is not a surprise.
Yay.
But yeah, but they think it's great how the teachers have been coordinating it. One thing that I've just heard is that they don't like how many emails sometimes they get in the morning, but I don't think they can, I don't think they should complain about that, but it's been, I don't know, I think it's been great. Also, the high school news team, sort of, just came out with a little bus stop video and more to come in the future. And that's all I have, but nice to see you all.
Can I just add a little? Can I just, can I just, in a little, real quick, about Josh's, the little bus stop video? It was Josh who did the video, and if you haven't seen it, you really should. He has done a little yoga for us all. So, so if you need a little, what was it, your morning wake-up, Josh? That was what you, yeah. So it's, it's awesome. So thank you for doing that, Josh. It's really fantastic.
There's a clap there for you, Josh, from Mr. Campbell.
Just, I'm sorry to leap in here, but one of the last town meetings I got to attend at the high school recognized a very important person in this group as the student of the month. Mr. Campbell, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, please. Josh Gander Whaley was our January Student of the Month. And Josh, we wish to, again, congratulate you. You do a lot at Winthrop High School and have really truly earned this recognition.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yay.
Congratulations.
Yay, Josh. Okay. Hannah, nice to see you this evening.
Nice to see you too.
How are you doing?
I'm good. How about you?
Are you hard at work?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So I just think this whole thing has been kind of crazy, and I wish I could end my senior year in a different way, but I will say that the online classes have been going very well, and I've been having a couple of classes a week using the Zoom meetings, and it's been great. The teachers have been doing an excellent job juggling everything, so I just want to thank them for all their hard work they've been putting in for us. So, that's all I have.
Nicely done. Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute. Wait for it. There we go.
Where did you find the hand?
Down by where it says reactions.
Reactions, okay, yeah.
You can also do a thumb up.
Fantastic.
Kenner, did you, did you see my pause there?
All right, good job.
Do you see it?
Yeah, I do now.
I had it, I lost it.
Thank you, Kenner. And I'd just like to finish up. I think that we need to try to look for the silver lining in all of this, and maybe, as it's already been said, it's our teachers' incredible surge in their knowledge about all technology. There's maybe a little bit of that silver lining in this. So I'm, I'm going to read a quote, and then you can all guess who you think wrote this, that, that maybe is appropriate for this evening. "It is, it is not the critic who counts. It's not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man, or in this case, the woman, who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs and comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcomings. But who does actually strive to do the deed? Who knows the great enthusiasm, the great devotion, who spends himself or herself in a worthy cause? Who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement? And who at the worst, if he fails, at least he fails while daring greatly? So that his or her place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who know neither victory nor defeat." Who wrote that?
Donald Trump?
Theodore Roosevelt.
Oh, good, that's good.
And I thought it was appropriate as our teachers and our administrators are really striving and working hard in different directions. And some people might be critical and others are not critical, but we have to keep on, keep on keeping on. So whatever we can do as a school committee to support you, please let us know through your superintendent. And I just want to thank you all very much.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second?
All, all in favor? Hold it. I have to do the roll call. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. B, Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Sorry, Susan, sorry.
It's okay.
And I also, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, so much for coming to our Zoom meeting this evening.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Matt, thanks so much for facilitating.
You're very welcome.
For everything you've done.
Excellent. Thank you. See you all next month.
Good night.
Good night. Bye, everybody.
Good night.